I'm calling to order the Monday, October 21st, 2024 meeting of the North School Committee, pre-town meeting. First up, we don't have a flag, there's strict pledge of allegiance. Norton Media is recording, we don't have anyone else in here, so I'll tell them anyone else is recording. First up on the agenda is town meeting articles, discussion and vote.
So we always put this on here as a placeholder, just in case there is an article that we need to take action on. I don't believe there is anything that needs our attention this evening, but if the committee has any items relevant to tonight that we'd like to discuss, we can do that.
Do we have, what do we have, three articles?
Article four is the free cash.
And then what, yeah, what is the MSBA?
Uh, yes. I believe that, yeah.
Ten, that's ten. Article ten is the MSBA, uh, Northern School Group.
Thank you.
Article four is the operating budget for free cash.
Yeah, and article eight is capital.
And article eight is capital. And then the only ones that I think the school committee would have some to do with would be article sixteen, since the MBTA.
Yes.
And how it could come into the district. But other than that, I think the rest of them are kind of out of our perp, if you've got them.
Yes, so just those two.
And free cash is all lumped together, you said?
Free cash, um, it's all, it's one number, so actually it's, um, I believe because it is not recommended by the finance committee, um, there is no table or breakdown in the warrants. So typically what happens is you see.
So someone's been out there making a motion.
A table. Yeah, so what is going to need to be made up on the floor? And then, um, we have our information on that, which we're asking for, and I'm ready to speak to that tonight. I don't know what the town side is planning to do in terms of if they're putting all their numbers up there or what they're planning maybe.
I would think they'd be prepared to have all the numbers because I'm assuming, and I hate to say assuming, but someone has told them they're going to move it forward, so they should have all the information ready. I've been surprised where our town meetings.
I can only control what the school asked for and how prepared we are, so, um, Christine and I have all of our information ready to go, we've got information on capital if that's needed, um, so I think we're in good shape. And we'll kind of see how the night flows.
Anything else? Uh, next one, transportation update.
That's you?
Um, so we are off to a great start this year, um, with our bus. We have a new bus supervisor, H. L. Bloom this year, and she's been fantastic. That's a great change for us, very good communicating with all the principals and secretaries. So that is definitely exciting on the school level side. Uh, we have about fourteen hundred, a little over fourteen hundred students registering this year so far, and we've brought in to date a hundred and thirty-eight, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Three thousand, four hundred and fifty of that is from the late fee that we implemented October a year ago, which is high, it's almost more than double from last year. Um, a lot of, we also have more people go on payment plans, um, I think due to the increased fees. We are having a little more trouble collecting that than we have in years past. So we have about almost three thousand outstanding of that that we have not collected that we know we will get. And also, we have now down, um, quite a number of riders that have not paid that shit had. We started doing bus pass checks earlier this year to avoid that. And Alex Sanborn, our transportation coordinator, has done a great job finding those individuals and we've been reaching out to them to collect, and that's another almost four thousand.
Four thousand?
Almost.
Forty or four?
Four.
Four, okay. I was like, four?
We'll take the four then. Nightly.
Now, do, well, that, I'm thinking more of the high school, maybe the middle school, is that number going to tick up with like, fall sports ending, winter sports, that we might see a slight change?
I think so, so a lot of the payments that we're kind of chasing, they'll register, but then they won't pay because they're trying to preserve the spot, but they're not using it for the fall. So the mornings are higher riding count, but, um, the afternoons are pretty dead, especially in the high school. There's no sports at the hall.
And then how has the rest lodges, street issue, is that all kind of squirreled away?
Yeah, we haven't heard anything. So I think what happens is, um, I think we spoke about it, they were letting some of the riders down, the buses down before a certain time, and then they would, they were allowing buses, but then you'd have to stop and wait for a share to move, or is it okay to go now? And they want to be consistent, some days you could go down, some days you couldn't. So I think we're wrapping up one area and we might reopen that route so those parents don't have to drive to the stop anymore. So it's, it's been getting better.
Anything else on transportation? Good to go. Uh, enrollment update, Dr. O'Neil?
Uh, so every year we try to provide a enrollment update around October first. Um, October first is the heart stop date, of which we are responsible for, um, reporting enrollment to the Department of Education, and the October first numbers are what all of our funding is based on for the following year. So they will use this number of twenty-four, twenty-four for our enrollment figures for the FY26 budget. Um, we are down fifty-eight students from last year to this year. The primary reason that we're down fifty-eight is all of our kindergarten numbers. Um, at LGN, we have twenty-two fewer students in the kindergarten class this year, and at JCS, we have twelve fewer students than we did at this time last year. Kindergarten is one of the most challenging things to predict. It really, um, has to do with either birth rates or families either deciding to send their child. A lot of times we'll see kiddos with summer birthdays, that parent will hold them for another year. We, we have tried for a number of years to, um, use the town hall birth rates to kind of predict what our number is going to be, and it is absolutely impossible to do. For many years when we were doing full day kindergarten with, um, with the lottery system, we tried to go through that process, and there's never a rhyme or reason. At this time, we are also, we also have twenty-two fewer students in our Little Landshoes preschool program. That's very typical for the beginning of the year, because students that are eligible for preschool services, they join us throughout the year once they turn three years old. So, um, when we look at numbers in January, those numbers will definitely be over the ninety-four, probably closer to one oh five or one oh ten. So that, that's fairly typical. In terms of the kindergarten numbers, I couldn't really tell you guys, other than birth rates, perhaps, what that anomaly is, but, um, we actually ended up moving one of the kindergarten teachers at LGN up to third grade, um, to reduce the, uh, that bubble up there. And so it made those class sizes much more manageable for our third grade teachers. So anytime we can do that and move, um, teachers around without an impact to the budget is always a great thing. So that is our current numbers there. Two thousand, one hundred and eighteen Norton students. We have two hundred and thirty-three school choice students, uh, forty-four students that are enrolled through our Read, Staff and Heart Hearing Program, and finally twenty-nine students that are in special education out of district lists.
So a couple more from last year for out of district?
Yes, and again, well, last, last year in June, we had thirty-three, so we're down four. Um, in, in October, we had twenty-six, so we went at thirty-three by the end of the year. And then, yeah, and then that, and now to twenty-nine, that's, like, as you guys know, I took both of them. That's those numbers that ebb and flow constantly. We sat down this morning at a part of our central office meeting, we meet every Monday, and talked through some students that, you know, we're starting to see the writing on the wall and this potentially could be a different place then. So, um, we also have some students that will age out through the course of the year, which will be a savings.
Yeah, so that was my other question, like, when we look at the twenty-nine out of district, do we maybe have some on the radar that are close to achieving their goals and coming back into district? Do we have that identified as a?
Yeah, potentially. So we have one student that's currently, um, in a very comprehensive out of district placement that will be aging out in December. So that will be something that we've already anticipated, those savings, and are looking, um, at, you know, applying those to student needs elsewhere. And then we do, you know, as people may or may not know, we do an annual IEP review with all of our students, both in district and out of district, and placement is always one of those things that comes up. If we're able to service a student here in district and they're able to get all of their educational needs met, we want to bring them back in, we know number one, it's good for students to be with their peers, um, you know, with the kids, their siblings, their neighbors, it's always better to be closer to home for students and families. And, um, you know, having students in their home school is such a great opportunity for them. Um, and we try to do that whenever we are able to to make sure, but if we can't meet their needs, then obviously we have to audition, so.
What is our cutoff date for kindergarten, August?
I guess the first. Uh, and then we do have a policy that allows parents whose children turn five with, between the thirty-first and the first day of school, so some days it's like, well, which is September seventh, sometimes it's September third, to appeal, um, and, you know, as a mom of a July first daughter who sent her child to school and regretted it, and July twenty-third son that kept it home, I always try to talk them out of it, but what we do, what we do is we go through a really comprehensive process, they'll meet with one of our testing counselors, we'll give them some academic testing, we'll have conversations with them, and then we make a recommendation if they're ready or not. And it's, our decision is final, and it's not appealable. So, um, we have one maybe every year, some years more than others, some years not at all.
Boss before we had.
Yeah, so that's when we changed the policy, that was.
I remember that.
I say that was these five, six years ago. Yeah.
It was pre-COVID, so.
It was definitely pre-COVID, so.
And we wouldn't anticipate any kindergarten kids joining like second of the year, yeah?
Unless they move, unless they were getting, yeah.
Not that good, yeah. It's time.
Nope.
So when the state gives us our, our, the Roma's twenty-four, twenty-four, what do we give from the state as part of the chapter seven funding?
So we look at that twenty-one, eighteen number, and they also look at the out of district enrollment, because those students are Norton students.
So they take those two?
Those two numbers, right? So DHH is not included in that because those students have a home district. We do, I believe, have two or three Norton students that are considered part of that enrollment. Um, and then school choice, we get this school choice.
Money.
Allocation, but we do not get the individual, the peripheral allocations.
When we look at the numbers for out of district, so, um, sorry, two, twenty-four, so twenty-nine, but then you said if we had like two or three DHH students, is that part of the out of district number?
Yes.
Okay. And then part of the DHH number.
So you only get, you only get paid for the months, but.
Right, so they, just number wise, that kind of is considerable, okay.
Yeah, so, so really, if we're looking at these twenty-nine numbers, those two or three students are included in our out of districts enrollment, but in our case, we're actually hosting the program.
Yes.
In-house, which is, you know, really great.
Yeah, no, that, that was, I was just numbers wise, curious how that.
And then that goes kind of back to our warrant of why we're asking for the hundred and sixty, if it's a hundred and sixty.
One sixty-eight oh two, yeah.
Um, so we're kind of adding those to it.
Yep, and the one sixty-eight oh two is based off of the numbers from October of twenty twenty-three, which that was twenty-one, sixty-six inclusive and twenty-six.
Thank you for including both.
Yeah, it's, it's actually really helpful to look at, and I, at first, you know, I said to him, I go, wow, this is like a big difference when you look at, you know, fifty-eight different students. But then I sat down today and I, I crosswalked the different grades, and it's like.
It's a couple here.
It's a couple here, a couple there, like, um, we went, at JCS, we increased by nine first graders this year, that cohort went up nine.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, the seventh grade cohort went down seven. It's, those are the two biggest gaps, everywhere else is one or two, you know, and it's, so it's, it's actually not a huge shift, it's those kindergarten numbers that are really the big factor this year.
Just made me think of it since seventh grade, thinking, do we get a report of who goes to?
Yes.
Other high schools as well? Can we get those numbers just for future?
Yeah, um, off the top of my head, I believe it was roughly twenty-nine to thirty students went elsewhere this, um, fall, but I will get you actual numbers and data on how many were even.
And.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
No, just, I, I know that's rare, but like, if a child chooses to go to Southeastern and then maybe they don't get their shop and they come back, how does that count? Wouldn't be till the next year, go.
If they come back before October first, it's lucky for us, and if they don't, it's lucky for them, so. Yeah, but that, it's, that, that hard number. Um, so, um, we do have kids come back, we have kids that go to the end and come back, and sometimes it's just about fit.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, yeah. But I will hit you guys, um, those numbers about high schools. If you look at it, it's actually interesting because we had, um, in eighth grade, we had a hundred and eighty-six students? Oh, sorry, we had a hundred and ninety students in June, and we only have a hundred and eighty-nine now. That's only one student different. So we know, we did have a few students that are came in through school choice, so it's not a big, it's not a big change.
How many students would you estimate, like, roughly, leave eighth grade?
It depends on the year.
Okay.
It really truly does, so typically, um, you know, the class cohort is anywhere between one seventy to two hundred. It's typical to see anywhere between thirty to forty students leave in a, in a typical year. Uh, we were actually kind of surprised that the number was a little bit lower than we had anticipated.
Well, that's when you said twenty-nine to thirty, that doesn't, that seems like.
Seems normal.
A typical amount.
Yeah, it is very typical, but, so it depends on the year. We find that students have a harder and harder time getting into Northeastern, Northeastern.
As well.
Um, hardest time getting into Southeastern, um, just because so many students want to attend, and they just have minimal, you know, yeah, facilities available, so, um, I actually, yeah.
Like, going through with my two youngest, like, when you get in, they want to answer because.
Yeah, because somebody else is on the way to us.
Like, they, and I remember the guy calling me a couple of times, like, she, they haven't made their decision, like.
They still have time, yeah.
It is competitive, but, and I know, I have a medallion, but, uh, a family member has, and the new Bristol Aggie looks gorgeous from the renovation I did, and they've expanded a lot of their facilities.
And, you know, anytime a student wants to go to Southeastern or to Bristol Aggie and go into a program that we don't have, we're not able to offer them, like, it's such, it's a great opportunity for them, it's, you know, we're partners in that, um, if there's something here that we can offer, obviously we want them to stay, but. Animal husbandry is just not in the cards for us at this moment.
They actually just opened up an animal, like, a free clinic.
Yes, it's amazing, oh, really? Yeah, they've got like, well, everything, they've just got some really great programs, so.
Just one more question around, so school choice wise, obviously, we put at grades seven through ten.
Yes.
Obviously, anyone who's in district, or who was here, stays here. But like kindergarten, we have eight combined, if you will.
Yes.
Of those, mostly, I'm assuming like teachers.
So, so, so typically those are siblings.
Or siblings.
So, um, if we, so we always want to keep families together, so if they have older children that are enrolled as school choice students, they have the option to come to Norton as a school choice student. Um, we do have two staff members that their children are attending LGN as kindergarteners, and then one staff member whose child is attending JCS, but that, yeah, that child is also a sibling. So, um, I think we have two new families this year, um, that are, that are staff members, right? That's part of the kindergarten enrollment.
And I think another nice, well, maybe not nice, I guess the word might not be best, but I think a lot of people were worried about school choice going downhill with the override not passing, so on and so forth, but obviously you're going to have some attrition.
Yeah.
Regardless, one way or another, but in all honesty, when you're kind of looking at this, it's pretty much state standard across the board. Last year, grade three had twenty-three, this year, grade four is twenty-three. You know, so I don't think we've seen too much of a drop off, um, you know, of, of losing programs, losing teachers, people are going to pull out of school choice, it doesn't really appear that it's drastic by any means.
And we also have to consider that we had fifteen seniors last year, that were school choice students that graduated with a Norton High diploma, um, and so obviously, we did not back those.
Yeah, I think the other thing too is, we have to factor in where they're coming from, it might be worse. Like, if they're coming from.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, so.
Norton is still a great little town.
It is still a great district, I mean, we've, we've had our ups and downs, but I mean, if their district is not financial, financially less soluble than us, then.
Yeah.
They're just going to stay.
I mean, I just think even, yeah, I mean, before the last nineteen, school choice, fifteen of them graduated. And, I mean.
Did we turn anybody away this year, through school choice, or we didn't?
Only two people that were outside of the age that we approved. So we had a number of families reach out for kindergarten through grade six, and unfortunately, we just had to tell them no. Uh, we did, um, we had enough seats for people that were interested in seven to ten. Uh, I am going to be bringing to you all an updated school choice policy for the November sixth meeting. One of the things that we found is that the way our policy is written was not actually the practice that we had been kind of following for the last several years, so we need to update the policy, um, and then we also have to update our application, uh, process. So, um, I've worked with the Department of Education on how to reword that language, so we'll bring it to you on the first November meeting for the first reading, and then the second November meeting will be for a vote. Ultimately, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is we're trying to push up that deadline for school choice families that you have to have everything in, I mean, really before July first. And so if we have more people that are interested and, and seats available, we have to do a lottery. We cannot accept them on a first come, first served basis. So those, you know, we learn something new all the time, um, and so that will be coming to you in the future.
And then with the special enrollment that we got as well?
Yeah.
I guess I have two questions. One is, I'm assuming this is the entire district, so this has.
Everybody.
Everybody, school choice.
Yeah.
Everybody's in this, okay, cool. And then can you just go through, I think just from, from my standpoint, I'm assuming, I think I know what it means, but from shares, in basically, how do you kind of get broken down?
Um, so those are by building, right? So Amy Dunner is serving the role of team chair this year, she's a hundred and thirty-five students that are on IEPs at the high school, that are on her caseload. The next one down, that's the middle school, Yale School, JCS, LGN, and then the bottom number, the thirty-eight, that is our Little Landshoes preschool program. So those.
He isn't on JCS, she moved?
I'm sorry? No, Healan is at the Yale School, yeah. She's a great, she's, she's great over there, so she used to be the great teacher at JCS.
She's been a flash of teachers for a while.
She was, she's amazing, and she's doing a really great job over at, um, you know, over there, yes, so thank you. Um, yeah, so that's the number there, so if you look, you can see like, the high school has a hundred and thirty-four, but Amy has a hundred and thirty-five, so she may have a student that has itinerant services as part of her caseload. So they come in, they get some services, but they might be at a different high school, or they might be homeschooled or something along those lines, so that's why those numbers can be a little bit off.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, um, Alex Sanborn in Casey's office updates this every month for us, um, so she always gives us, so you can kind of see the way things trend throughout the course of the year too, which is, which is helpful.
From this number of five sixty-six, are we seeing a correlation from year to year? That's like, it's always going up, it's always going down, staying kind of stagnant, kind of, what is that?
Um, our. Our historical number is that, um, we're around twenty-two percent of students that are on IEPs. I don't know if that's twenty-two percent, like, I haven't done the math, but historically, that's kind of where we are. That is high, the state average is eighteen. So four percentage points doesn't seem like a lot, but, but it really truly is. So, um, I think one of the biggest challenges that we have as a, as a community and that we continue to talk about is that if we don't make efforts and improvements to general education, we're going to always continue to have a special education problem. And the more we pull from general education, the more services, the more supports, the more money we're going to be putting toward special education. So these are some things that we have to make sure that we're being really cautious and careful about as we're thinking about where we want to, um, focus our attention for the budget cycle this upcoming year.
What about in terms of like RTI services, or students getting, um, RTI for like reading and math and things? And like, what are those numbers?
Yeah, so those, we don't, um, track them, yeah, from month to month like this, um, because really, those should be a more fluid number.
Right.
Um, you know, I might be pulling a group of kindergarten students that don't know their letters, working with them for three weeks, and then I'm going on, pulling a different group. Theoretically, yes. Obviously, when we, we cut, um, the reading interventionists at the Yale School, so that is downward attitude one there, we cut them, two with math interventionists, so we've got Mrs. Dietz just going back and forth between JCS and LGN right now, so, um, the supports are less than what they were last year. Brian and I had a conversation earlier today about, you know, the need for us to really look at how are we spending our time when students are in the classroom? Because as much as I hate to say it, like, like Calvary's not coming, like, this is it. So we have to figure out a way to make sure that students are getting what they need with the staffing that we have. So how can we do that across classrooms? How can I say, okay, you know, in my class, I have, you know, three students that are really struggling with this concept, Brian has one, Christine has two, how can we pool resources, I'll take all, you know, all six of them, and then I fire my kids out for enrichment or a different type of intervention? How can we do that within the structure and the schedule that we have? And how can we give teachers permission to, you know, to do that and say, yes, this is what we want you to do? Like, do they have the resources, do they have the permission at all of those things? Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, for sure.
Agreed. And, and I think the other conversation that I've been having with teachers is, like, well, what interventions have they received so far? And, like, well, clearly, you know, that didn't work, so what's our next step? Like, special ed can be the only unit in town.
Right, right.
Right, so like, we need to make sure that we're spending time focusing on building capacity for general education teachers, and, you know, one of the benefits of our reading program is that there are so many different resources for teachers to be able to utilize. Some of the teachers are like, there's just so much, which is great, right? Because ultimately, there's going to be a little bit of something for everyone, and, you know, being, having access to intervention resources to work with a small group.
And then, so we have, as part of our contract with inter-reading, uh, we have in-person coaching days. So what we're doing on Friday is our consultant for inter-reading is coming in, she, myself, the principals, are going to do walkthroughs of as many classes as we can in the morning, just take down chunks, tidbits of what we see, and then in the afternoon, each building is going to have specific breakout times with us to kind of look at what we see, what we observe, and then we're going to talk a little bit more about the small group portion of inter-reading, and then problem solve around being strategic. If you have a night, you know, if you have two hours of, of reading, let's talk about how that can be broken down so that if you have kiddos that may not be quite where they are, you can catch them just before it becomes an issue. So we're really mindful of our onboarding of inter-reading and then marrying that with using this support within the program to try and empower teachers to work with kids in the normally allotted hours. Can you, is it easy for you to kind of pull these numbers over like last five years?
Yeah, probably. I, I know I didn't hear last year's.
Yeah, like, if we could just like, I, I would like to kind of just see, has there been an extreme shift for better or worse, especially like me and Jack have had a little psych conversation about like COVID, around COVID? You know, like, is our special education program growing at significant rates? And, you know, that can, you know, kind of explain some of the issues, not issues, but some of the, you know, some of the uptick, the extra positions, so on and so forth, because.
Yes. What I would say too is the numbers themselves may not have actually changed, but the needs of the students.
Correct, yes.
Right, because like, a number is a number.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but sometimes the needs of the students are much more significant than years past, so, um, yeah.
And I don't think we need it by month, by, I mean, most of us want it by month, but even if we got like the end of the year.
Yeah, I could say it with Alex and.
To just kind of have an idea, you know, because I, again, you know, we have to have our data, you know, and like, might not be something we can worry about now, but someone in ten years may be able to look at, back at this and say, hey, this curriculum is working really well, what would happen with the reading numbers and the test scores and, you know, so on and so forth, that, yeah, again, it might not be us in this group, but someone could look back and say, hey, listen, we had a nice drop here, we should really be looking at explaining, yeah.
We actually do have that, because we need a four grant, one of our special education grants anyway, so we have to.
It does, yeah.
And I will say, maybe the special needs realm, Norton is really known for special education, like. And I will say, maybe the special needs realm, Norton's really known for special education, like when it's out there, people are saying, there's a program, so there are a lot of room in district just to come.
Yes.
Which is, which is nice, but it's. The double edged sword.
All good?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, next up, discussion and vote on additional school committee representative for capital committee.
So at our last meeting, we discussed an idea to have a capital subcommittee for our group. We felt like that might be a good idea to, number one, walk you through some of the challenges and the issues that we have. But also kind of bring a little bit more input to our systems and our, and our process. And, you know, hopefully get some of those things off the list that have been on the list for a long time. So Audrey is currently our capital rep, she killed it that night, she did a great job. And so we're looking for someone to join her along with Christine, myself, and wait for the capital subcommittee.
So this committee would just be internally, we wouldn't have another.
No, it would just be internal, we could probably meet.
But they could be interchangeable at a capital meeting.
But we still.
I mean, so Audrey would still be the rep.
Yes. No, I'm just saying if, if Audrey has.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
And I think that was what we tried to stop.
And so we would probably meet at the most orderly. But really, it probably would just be, you know, when things come up and we'll say, guys, you know, just finally know, we're thinking about S I and Z.
Like a month out from meetings.
Yep.
Motion to nominate Justine to the capital subcommittee.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Do you get a choice? You always vote for yourself. If your body capacity, you vote for yourself.
It's true, it's true, I didn't know, I don't know the.
No, I mean, I think, you know, and, you know, having a thought about this is you guys have the longest tenure left. So it just makes a little more sense, whereas we don't know what the election looks like in April. So there could be three new bodies here, we don't want to change, so at least you guys bring a little bit of consistency.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Very true.
Okay.
Awesome. Next one is discussion and vote on school committee delegate for November M A S C annual business year.
Lot of it.
So, so ultimately, each year at the joint meeting, M A S C membership has a annual business meeting where they talk through different educational issues. And each school committee is invited to send a delegate to represent your votes. You, it is not required if, no, if you guys do not feel like any of the issues that are out there as part of their.
Do they send them to the list?
Yes, I included it for you guys in that email that I did, it also should be in your packet. Oh, maybe not, it's not the packet, but the list, I sent it to you guys, you know, that. Ultimately, if you don't want to send someone, you don't have to. It's really what it comes down to. I will be there during the day on Thursday, Karen is presenting on cyber safety. And so ironically.
Wonder why?
Actually, she was chosen to present prior to our incident last June. And I will be there with her just to kind of talk about the superintendent's perspective and some things that we did, things that we had in place that we're really happy about, some lessons that we learned. So I will be there during the day, but I'm just driving back and forth, so.
So historically, I don't think we've sent anybody in probably three years. Prior to that, we sent somebody for three years, I think, that was Kathleen.
At least three years in a row and she would go to the whole conference and she would bring, she would go to sessions and she would bring back information. Maybe she would write a little report and tell you about everything she did.
So typically, here's my take about it, is we would discuss this in a meeting as a committee, look through the resolutions and say, we support it, we don't support it. However, there's never been any action on any of them since I've been here. So that's what they do is they talk about them, but I think where M A S C, their biggest fault is they don't have somebody that can bring their thoughts and processes to the state level to institute a bill. So that's all they do is they talk about it, they've been, years past, there's been some great resolutions, like a lot of things. And, but the problem we have to always contend with is we're a small piece of the puzzle. So if it's a, if it's a benefit to say thirty districts not named Brockton, Framingham, Worcester, that's good for those thirty districts. But you have those major districts that it's not good for, so it's, it's dead in the water. So, I mean, Kathleen liked it for the first year and then she was kind of, she felt obligated in her second, third year, but I just, they don't really bring anything out of it because I don't think they have a state rep to really push their agenda. It's, it's kind of the opposite of like the M T A conference that we hear about, like, they have people that can, you know, make some waves.
Make some waves.
And M A S C doesn't, so. That's why we kind of went away from it when Kathleen chose not to come back, but because good resolutions go there to die.
We have conversations with our own local reps when there are things that are important as well. And I think having, you know, we've been very fortunate to have J P Harris for a number of years, who will be, you know, moving on, will have someone new in January. But we also have a great relationship with Steve Howitt, we have a great relationship with Senator Feeney as a committee and as a district. And, you know, we reach out to them a lot about different, about different things and that has been more impactful for us. But it's really up to you guys.
I have a, I have a work talk that I have to go to all day on that day anyway, so.
I mean, to me, to me, I think we should, moving forward, we should always have someone on it. Because I think it's important that if we did have something, something big comes up and we can have someone go to it, I think we should do it. Obviously, it's another day of someone's day, driving all the way to Hyannis and so on and so forth. But I mean, I don't know, you know, I guess by me saying that, I would, if you want me to do it. And maybe, maybe moving forward, we always just kind of nominate the chair until we, or we, or we just rotate it. But if we always just nominate the chair, we typically, historically have always rotated chairs anyway, that like.
It was, it was more about, if you wanted to do it, you did it. I mean, you have a little bit of a budget for school, you track for things like this, so it's, but. And, and this is where, like I said, a lot of the resolutions don't affect the district at all.
So, I mean, the conference itself is actually a great opportunity for a school committee member to go, they have a ton of sessions that are relevant to your role. They have sessions that help to give you a different perspective on the day to day of schools. And it's also really good for networking too, because then you're meeting other school committee members from either like communities or different communities. And, and just like for me, when I'm struggling with something, I call my friends that are superintendents in other places and say, have you heard of this, like, what are you guys doing about this? Having resources for you as committee is not a bad thing.
So, yeah, if you want me to wear it, I'll wear it this year.
It's up to you, I mean, no one is.
I think I can make it, I'll still look, but.
I would have done it, but I have a professional development person that I're set up for, so.
I've never gone personally, I mean, I've heard mixed results. Like I said, the biggest thing coming out of it is there's a lot of talk about the resolutions and then everybody votes on it. Sometimes it's not even unanimous, some, so it's like, I don't even know how like, if it, not everybody's for it, how do you do that? It's not like if they're counting votes or something, so, I mean, it just, my, my biggest concern with it is no action typically comes out of it.
Yeah, that's possible.
But that's why members in the past have just said, you know, let's, let's not send anybody. But a lot of it, like I said, that's why I asked for the, for the resolutions, like.
Yeah, I thought there were already enough, I think I thought so.
So, it's, if you want to go, go, if you don't, don't.
Wow, do we vote, yes, I know, right?
Well, do you want to check his schedule, because we still have another, we can table that till Wednesday, if you want to check his schedule.
Doesn't, I don't think anyone sounded like they're really ready to run and jump, drive down to Hyannis, so.
We did get an extension for submitting someone's name, so.
So we can table it till Wednesday.
Yeah, we've got an extension till tonight.
We don't have anything that weekend, so I shouldn't have anything at work, go ahead and nominate me if you want.
All right, I will nominate next elector to be the M A S C rep for the annual conference.
All those in favor? Um, sorry, I lost my agenda, uh, that's it, other business?
No, not for me.
All good, all good? Uh, entertain motion to adjourn. Do, actually, do we move into another meeting?
No.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? See you at the meeting.